And our first is modified facilities master plan update. And we have a bunch of material that the district has provided to us based on some of the discussion of some of the projects. So, Duane, maybe you can give us just a quick update?
Actually, Craig Lee. Yeah, Craig is going to do that, but that's okay. Well, you've got to talk about the written summary that you got. And we just tried to put together a little bit of history of what's been done. You may recall that last November, the board chose to accelerate some of the projects.
There he is.
And we left some of them behind. There's Craig. Do you want to tell them a little bit on this or do you want me to keep going?
Sure.
Sure. Yes, why? You or me?
No, I can do it.
Thank you.
We provided in your board workshop materials along with a whole lot of other stuff, basically a summary for this April 4th work session. And we just wanted to reiterate for you the timeline that we had established last November for your making the decision. Remember, last November, you accelerated a portion of the plan, but not all of the plan. And so, we wanted to make sure that you had all the information you needed as we went through the spring in order to make a decision, hopefully by our next board meeting on May 8. Wanted to point out some things on our general obligation bonds that have occurred and that need to occur as we move forward. And so, I just provided you with some general information and some facts about our geo-debt, our total geo-debt, what's expiring, what's coming on, when we plan to sell additional debt in March of 19 and 20. Under our current plan, we moved, if you remember, when we were doing the bond, we thought we would use a four installment sale. And it became very evident that if we went to a three installment sale, that we could save quite a little bit of money in the bond market that we're currently in. And so, we chose to change that last fall and go with a three installment sale. And that's going to save us over $10 million for our stakeholders in overall bond cost, which is really a positive thing. The 98 cents is in the budget that you approve for next year. And we have such strong property growth in our area, even with an up and down years in the averages. We anticipate that we'll be able to absorb that 98 cents within those next 15 budget cycles. And then, the total geo-debt that we'll have out there outstanding gives you an idea of what your position will be when it's all sold and this project is wrapped up in 2022. And you can see the total amount of debt against your borrowing capacity, and you're roughly at about 50%. And so, there's still quite a bit of flexibility there should you choose to do that. And then, we provided an analysis for you on the construction inflation costs. And by accelerating all of the projects in the way that we had originally specified, we would save roughly about $4 million in inflation costs. And Duane put together quite an extensive four-page conversation about construction inflation and what that looks like and provided that at a previous meeting. Save, just to remind you that we have one borrowing left this spring. You'll be introduced, you approve the beginning of that process tonight with an agreement with our financial advisors. And then, we'll hear more about this at our next meeting. But we're anticipating borrowing roughly $9 million to finish out the SAVE funded projects for that portion of the facility master plan. And then, I gave you a little look into the future on what that looks like as far as the legislation that's been passed. I didn't get into all the particulars. It does require a passage of a revenue purpose statement. And there are certain things you can spend it on and certain things you can't spend it on. They put some more of those qualifiers on there. But all in good time, we can look at that. But I didn't feel much to remain to this particular conversations, though we're not looking at that at this point in time as a funding source. But you can see that there'll be a significant amount of money available to the district to use for facilities on into the future. And then, I think it was Director Istone who asked a question about the general fund. And so, I provided a little bit of background on the general fund. Opening up Grant Elementary is already factored into our projections. And even though, as I've shared with you, we have a very, very tight budget, that's been accounted for within those projections. And then, as far as accelerating these other projects, it really has little or no impact as it relates to staffing, except for the possibility of some additional maintenance crew for creating additional space. But up until now, we've been able to really absorb that and have been doing a pretty efficient job with all of that. And it's only been our new buildings that we've had to add additional staff. And so, we're feeling pretty comfortable that there should be a pretty minimal impact to the general fund as it relates to the other renovation work and the new spaces that we're putting on as a remainder of the five-year period here. And then, talked a little bit about what we needed to do to adjust the department staffing in order to accommodate this schedule. And I feel that that's underway to the point where we'll have a pretty comfortable opportunity to make sure that we're staffed in such a way as to be able to manage these projects in a responsible, efficient manner that you're accustomed to. And so, I laid that out. And then, the facility master plan planning considerations, we went through a little bit of historical basis for you about where we're at. And then, Duane in number eight provided a little bit of an update on the transitional housing and talked about the six-plex and the eight-plex and how that's being used and so forth. And then, just some additional information for you to review as you think about these acceleration of this plan.
Yeah. I would add that in the additional information, we attempted to answer some of the questions that were posed to us via email over the last month.
Okay. So, that pretty much just kind of walks through that document. And then, I'll let Duane now talk to you about the accelerated planning circles.
Any questions? Okay. This first sheet that we handed out, we'll hand you a second here in just a second, is the schedule as it exists today, as approved as of November 28. And basically, when you look at this, if you look in the center of the page, you see the vertical blue line, the bold line. Everything to the left of that was done with sales tax. Everything to the right of that is in the bond. Okay? So, already underway. If you look, if you go up to where the horizontal blue line is in 2018, Grant, Liberty High Phase Two, Lincoln and Mann have all been awarded. Liberty High is well underway. And Grant, we awarded last time, tonight you awarded Mann. And Lincoln last time as well. We've had pre-construction meetings on those three projects. Two of them are today. Everybody's cranked up and ready to go, so they're moving. So, that's good. Planning and just, do you want me to mention we're going to have a groundbreaking on May 8 or 22nd?
22nd.
22nd at Grant Elementary.
Yeah. 4:30.
So, the projects that are currently in design, the ones that we accelerated last time, are that vertical green line, North Central, Southeast, Tate and Alexander are all in design and various stages of design. You've been approving those as we go. West High, you'll see for, that's 2018. 2019, next spring, we intend to start West High Phase Two and City High Phase Two. Those projects are, and will remain in the same place they were in when we started this program back in 2013. We haven't changed it. They're right there where they were. So, the rest of the schedule cascading down to the right is as, pretty much the schedule was approved several years ago, basically the remaining projects other than Northwest, Junior High, Liberty High Phase Three are all elementary schools. That's the schedule we've been talking about. So, the one that's coming around right now, basically, you know, we were asked to look at what an accelerated schedule might look like. And I know we've had parts of this discussion already. So, we put together a plan for you here. There is a couple of changes from a previous recommendation that we made. I'll let everybody get it and then I can jump into it. So, if you look at this now, you see the bold vertical red line, okay? Everything to the right of that would be in the proposed accelerated schedule. Everything above that from CDI and up is already in the schedule. So, we tried to break this down so it'd be easy to understand. But we're proposing, in this particular scenario, Wood Elementary would be moved up a year, Kirkwood Elementary would be moved up three years, and Liberty High Phase Three would be moved up three years. The rationale for that, we looked at Kirkwood and we looked at Schimick. We had a lot of discussion at this level about which ones should go first. We evaluated both buildings for their mechanical needs. They both have some really severe needs mechanically. But what tipped the scale for us, I guess at administrative level, was that Kirkwood has more educational needs in terms of classroom space. So, with those two elements, Kirkwood, the scale tipped towards Kirkwood and away from Schimick. So, we basically reversed the two. Could we do them in the same year? That's problematic because we need to share a six-plex. So, we just basically want Kirkwood first, Schimick second, based on those needs. They both have really overtaxed mechanical systems. They both need to be replaced. But again, it was because of the educational needs in Kirkwood. Liberty High Phase Three, another change, based on the projected enrollments this fall. I think I heard last week, we're looking at 1,000 students already. And the original plan didn't have this project done until 2024. I don't think you can stand to wait that long. It needs to be done. So, we are promoting that as well. Then, the following year, 2020, would be the rest of the projects. There's seven elementary, there's six elementary schools and, or is there seven? Yeah, six elementary.
Six in Northwest.
And then Northwest. And then, they would all be done in 2021. So, the entire plan would be done three years early to support what Craig just told you about the savings of the bond and inflation. So, the other thing I might point out to you, you notice the bright red boxes, the first one around Southeast Junior High in 2018 and then the second one around Northwest in 2020. That's the 10-plex. And we spent the better part of today doing a construction phasing plan for Southeast Junior High. And this is new information for some of you. I'm thinking that this is going to extend over two years at Southeast. But it works out because we don't need the 10-plex at Northwest until the fall of 2020. So, it gives us the flexibility we need to do Southeast in the right way and least disruption to the students in the school. So, it worked out really well. The blue box on Kirkwood and then Schimick is the six-plex would be for one school year, the fall of 2019 at Kirkwood and then the fall of 2020 at Schimick. If you go on down to Lemmy, there's a yellow box there. And when we talked last, we didn't have an answer for that, but we kicked it around and with some help from the administrative staff, we determined that in theory Garner won't need the two duplexes that are there. Nor will Penn need the duplex that's there because in theory, Grant's going to be open and students will be moving from those two schools to Grant. So, we have, we freed up some duplexes that we can move to Lemmy during that construction process.
And probably maybe Alexander as well?
Maybe Alexander, yeah. I don't say how that goes. So, with that, I didn't answer any questions you might have.
I know I've asked you this before, but the Lemmy stuff, you would need those spaces because you're also doing interior work in some of those classrooms.
Yes. Lemmy has the oldest geothermal system in the district, was the first one. But it still needs maintenance. There still needs some upgrade. There's some lightings, there's some, you know, interior doors, case work, things like that. The building's got some age, so we need to, we need to phase through the building.
So, Schimick's getting a six-plex instead of the 10?
Yeah, we've been planning that for quite some time.
Right. But when we cleared the land and did that, we cleared the land and prepped an area for a 10.
A 10 could fit there with some initial work.
Now, originally with Schimick, we were talking about doing that over two summers and not having any 10s. With that gymnasium being a big part of Schimick, can't that be done without any place? Because the six-plex won't have restrooms and the kids will have to walk up, a ramp or a ramp will have to be installed, I don't know.
Looking back on your first question, we've always planned to have some temporary facilities at Schimick from back as far as 2013 or 14, as I recall. So, there's always been a plan to put a, to get through.
But there was some discussions doing it over two summers.
We're still going to do it over two summers. We're going to do it over two summers and the school year. So, during this, there's no way to do all the mechanical work at Schimick in two summers. It's a large, it's going to be totally redone. Schimick gets a whole new system. It's, the system right now is so bad that we have to run the boiler to stimulate the air conditioner.
Which is nonsense.
Huh?
Which is nonsense.
It is, it is nonsense, but it's a fact.
No, I, I.
Yeah. So, anyway. The plan there actually is to work it over two summers and one school year, thus the need for the, for the six-plex. Now, the gym, yeah, it can go on, it can get started. The problem with the gym is a little bit with the infrastructure on the site because it's going to have to go at the front towards that east parking lot. Kind of on the east side, the existing gym, there's an area right there, right now is where a lot of electrical transformer boxes, things like that, are going to have to get moved around. But it, but it can be built during the school year.
Right.
Right.
Okay. And I did raise some questions since Ag education is coming to our district. What we're doing at City of Liberty, are we including that in our discussions and our planning and our construction?
Well, at City High, we've had a couple of planning meetings you made to both of them, and a lot of other folks have too. And the discussion there is the, what we're going to do at City High, that right now the plan is to add a competition gym and some type of cafeteria and kitchen, which will free up the existing space for career tech. The question is, is there enough dollars in the project right now to fully rehab the career tech space? But we have set aside that we've identified the space where it will go. I think it will be adequate at City High, it's quite an large area. At Liberty High, there has not been any discussion, to my knowledge, about any type of additional career tech beyond the wood metal shop and the programs that are already there.
Well, I thought in the bond discussions leading up to the vote, there was, when I would bring up the concerns about career and technical, they said, well, there's money in there for them. We'll be able to do that.
There was career and tech included in the original project. There's a wood shop there.
No, I understand. But we're, we're looking to, like with our playgrounds, we want to exceed the minimum standard. And this is something that we agreed as a board priority. What, I want to make sure that we're, when we're looking at this, we're looking at this is, this is coming to our district, it's going to be a part of our curriculum going forward, just like we have in every building now, project lead away classrooms that we didn't have 10, 15 years ago, that we're providing for that reality.
Let me say this. If you approve the schedule on May 8, we will be starting the design work for Phase Two at Liberty right, or Phase Three right away. At that point, we can have discussions about how that might be incorporated into the plan. The original scope for that was just classroom addition for 500 students, to be honest with you. But there's no reason why we couldn't talk about planning some other space or plan for that space to include with the later project with SAVE. So, we have the same discussion at Liberty that we're having at City about where do we want to be in the future and what programs could we add and where would you add them? So, we can have those conversations.
That's what I was going to say too, Duane. I think part of it's a programming conversation as well. So, last times, we talked about that CT review and trying to determine which programs we want. So, you know, we have some space to take advantage of programming options. We decided to pursue at Liberty. City High will have additional space. How we outfit that space with what programming, I think is what this, this review will hopefully help us with to fill in. And so, some of that's equipment for classrooms, you know, some of that might take looking at our design of what that space looks like and what it can hold. But I think, I think that's why it's really important that we do that review and try to determine what exactly is that program going to be so that we can appropriately outfit those spaces. This gives us the kind of wide open physical space, but then we're going to have the actual, like, curricular materials that need to be accounted for in there as well.
I just hope we don't miss opportunities, that's all. And the key, the key word for me in your statement is might. And we might have that. So, I want, I wanted to be more affirming than we might.
Well, let me clarify. Between you and I, career tech is dear and dear to my heart. That's where I started. I, if at all possible, will include it. I can't guarantee what you may or may not approve in the final budget for a project. That's what might means.
So, Matt, will the review process be done, will it be far enough along before the design process that can be incorporated?
I guess the key part I would see is trying to have some flexibility in the design to allow us to be responsive to what that review looks like. You know, I don't think, I don't think it'll probably be fully complete. I wouldn't want to guarantee that. But I think we would be able to identify, you know, we've committed to things like ACE, we've committed to things like Ag. You know, there's some things we know, there might be some things we don't know that we'll want to have some flexibility for in that design. But I think with some of those pieces we do know, we can start to account for those spaces and try to outfit them accordingly and figure out what a bottom line for those is. But I think there's going to be other things that come up that we may say, hey, we're going to also try to, you know, build out a more robust program in this area that we won't have right before we go by that point.
Keep in mind, from that standpoint, we know we have classroom space needs for students for reg ed programming, English, Math, Science, Social Studies. We know that, that there's a need for that, and that's what Phase Three was planned for. But one of the opportunities that we always have is to come back with add-ons so we can spec out the design, so we can specifically write in whether it's for flexible career trade tech ed programming or specific, if we know some of that, if we're already at that point. And we can make sure that those are design alternates so that they are part of that RFP process and come in as part of that bid package so they're visible to the board for action.
And timeline, Duane, when would, when would you need board direction to?
Well, we're, if you approve this on May 8, I intend to bring you RFPs or proposals from architects by the end of May to start the design process yet this spring, early summer. So, at some point, what, those discussions have to take place this summer.
You know, it seems that some areas we have, science, you know, like a biology classroom might look very much like an ag classroom.
Sure.
And that, so I'm thinking, you know, probably in these designs, we're not going to see that super cool hydroponic grow space that requires a lot of infrastructure. But can we see a biology classroom with a greenhouse, like windows that come out, you know, that, that exist in some science? So, I, you know, where are those areas where we might need to know ahead of time to put in some, that allows that flex? And I think if we see that, then it's going to be easier for the board to say, oh, there's your Ag.
And we may want to take advantage of looking at where some of the space currently exists in the building and then look at where it might, a build out might be appropriate from a programming standpoint too. And that can certainly be part again of that alternate process as we look at some of those needs. And to Matt's point, some of it might be more general in terms of career trade tech ed, others might be more specific depending on how far along we are in that process.
And the, and the purpose and the reason behind asking you to approve this in May is so we have a year, you have a plan, you know, we have the time instead of having four or five months and you have to rush. Well, we'll have time to make those kind of adjustments.
And what is the timeline on the approval of the designs for Liberty?
Well, I don't have that worked out for you yet, but as soon as I get the RFPs back, we can work on that.
All right.
Well, I, well, just work backwards. If we want to put it out for bid in January, that means construction documents need to be done in December, design development in November, October, schematic design later than maybe September. So, we'd have the summer to work on it and then we need to get into the design and you can make changes to that as we go. But by, by the time we get the design development in November, it's pretty soon, in order to be able to build next year, right out of the chute.
I just wanted clarification. So, both the 10-plex and the six-plex actually do have bathrooms.
They do have restaurants.
So, just to clarify a comment that was made earlier. I know the Lemmy one, they won't, but I almost guarantee you that if you tell those teachers that you're going to get your project moved up three to five years, they'll take the turn.
Well, three.
Well, I mean, it would be done earlier than 2025. That was it.
And Hills was off the original bond language. I know that, you know, this accelerated model, how does Hills' needs fit into our long-term planning and?
You want to talk about that?
Sure.
Well, just to be clear, Hills was not part of the geo-bond, neither was Van Allen, Duane, Penn. They were part of the 10-year facility master plan. So, as we project out, I think that we could look at using SAVE dollars should that get extended and to plan out our next 10-year facility master plan. You obviously have a school like that included.
So, now you're saying, can you save dollars for them?
I said, if it gets approved.
Right. Well, once the RFP gets approved.
And the RPS.
The RPS.
Yes, yes.
And maybe add just a little more detail on that. We have started to have some conversations with the city of Hills in terms of what options might be available. They've got some funding that they've set aside. They're interested in exploring working with us as we consider what options might be available for Hills. It's a little bit different than when we think about our other schools simply because it is the only school in that community. And that community obviously is more distant from Iowa City, and so their city has a little different need than what we might see in, in one of our neighborhood schools. And so, they've reached out to us. We've had some good exploratory conversations about how we might partner with them. So, it gives us some time to start working on that with them.
Right. Well, I, from, from what I gathered from the people in the community, they're very eager to work with the district and to do that. And I think we have a unique opportunity, especially in Hills.
We've also been given a running list or a working list of projects that were not quite complete or left off, preschool rooms that we need, you know, inadequacies in some of the buildings. So, we've got quite a list going to help us develop that 10-year plan for SAVE, the next phase of SAVE.
And if I finish on what I was saying, Hills, as in other communities that require us to have traumatic shelters and things, I think we have a unique opportunity in Hills with what we construct there and make sure that that's built into that because that community does not have it.
So, I'm looking at SAVE, some topic that I made in the document, and item number three, it says that we could borrow as much as 25 million as soon as the year 2024. So, we can't borrow before then?
No.
Okay. So, we're talking about the Hills project not starting until after that.
Well, your other funding source would be a general obligation bond.
Another one, another bond?
Right.
Okay.
You can, you can always go that route, but you won't have new SAVE dollars available until 2024.
And those ones go till?
2049.
And we only have 25 million?
Right.
To work with in 2024? The rest of it doesn't come unless, until 2024. So, we're talking, you know, 10 years from now before we're really going to have that. So, I think the board would be wise to be thinking about a potential Plan B, whether it's another bond or what it's, what it's going to be because that, that money is not going to be enough. I mean, the needs.
And familiarize, we listened to that Hills project, that was like a million something or it was under 2 million, wasn't it?
The original project?
The original project.
It was, it was 780,000 dollars.
Right, it was under, was under a million.
Yeah. And then we added safety and security on top of that. So, it was close to maybe 100 million.
A million dollars.
Yeah. And I think that that original one didn't take into account some of the growth and population we've seen down there. So, I don't think it included some of the classrooms that we now anticipate we'd want to add to that building to make sure that it was adequate for the students.
Also, didn't it tell after, I mean, or that project was done before the boundaries were shifted down there?
Yes. That's why I said.
Fill the school after the project was done.
Overfill it.
Yes. So, and just another side note, we, we have built hardened gymnasium shelters, storm shelters. We built a hardened shelter at Alexander. We've built one at Hoover. We're building one in Longfellow. We're going to build one at Mann. We're doing it at Grant. So, all the new schools we've been doing have hardened shelters down. We've been doing it outside of FEMA because number one, FEMA money's dried up. And two, there's a lot of redundancy built into FEMA projects and we've been able to provide the same hardened shelter with a lot of the redundancy. For example, a FEMA shelter requires a full-fledged generator in the event that you lose power. We haven't done that. There's other things, they require restrooms inside of gymnasiums or some kind of facility. We haven't done that. But we have provided those safe shelters. We did it at Liberty as well. So, we have provided and been at. So we have provided and been in part of our standard design, hardening and shelter for students and staff at all our buildings.
So with this accelerated plan, we could potentially go up for another bond in 2021, like early 2021 or 2022?
You can go up for a bond right now or for a Geo if you have a plan.
I was saying, if the construction, the construction would be completed by then and they.
So, so stay the date again on that, 2021 would be what we would?
Well, just based on the timeline, we would be done with this bond construction in 2021. So we could potentially be working on our next fund facilities plan to put that out for a vote in 2021 to address some of those needs in Hills and the growth that we're seeing instead of waiting for SAVE dollars, which won't be available until 2024. And if we're able to address the needs of so many schools in our community that much earlier, to me, it would make sense that we're saving our community money. But by the way, that they've got confidence in the board to ask for yet another bond to address even more of our need and our growth to ensure that we have the classroom spaces in our community.
And by that point, we'd probably be in another elementary, some land we just purchased.
A junior high in Northport, I don't know. We're still growing. So, I mean, I, I.
I think we've set our, an agenda for the next work session we might have is looking out past our current year.
Yeah, we need a new ten-year facility master plan.
Figure out, funding is going to be tricky, but we at least need to get some sort of list.
Put a ten-year MFP starting in 2021 or 2022.
Right. At the end of this timeline.
It feels a little daunting, but. What other questions do folks have? Do we feel like we're ready for vote?
I was curious of one thing. Now I can't find it as I was going through the thing you had put together. Where it was, but it talked about doing, there was an assessment done across all the schools for. Educational adequacy review.
Right.
Who did that and what, was that where it was looking at? Well, everything, but how we started looking at, well, can we need some more music space, art space?
Yep.
You want me to answer that?
Yeah, go ahead.
In 2013, BLDD did a district-wide study. There was two parts that, one was the mechanical structural needs and the other was educational adequacy. We're getting forward to that chart, but it had a heat map like from A to D on music space for a particular school or gym space.
I think we remember.
Yeah. We use, we use that chart to help us fill the scope of the projects. So in other words, the gym at Schimick was undersized, so it's why it's skated into gym because of that educational adequacy. That's how that was used.
No.
Are we ready for a vote in the next meeting? That's not our next meeting. I feel like we have our questions answered and we're about clear to give the plan. I think the additional staff, I appreciate the thought process, Jen, and the additional coordinator and coordinator to just make sure that we've got the full job capacity to do this many projects concurrently.
Yeah, I, I took a two-year look, like I mentioned it the last week, you know? And honestly, if we don't change anything from last year to this year, these last two years, we're doing 119 million dollars in projects. Or excuse me, 109 million and this schedule only makes it 119. So it really hasn't bumped it up that much initially. The next set of years goes from 80 million to 113. So the, the one or two years out is where the, the pinch is going to be.
Duane, will we see any benefit to maybe the university putting their projects on hold?
There's a huge benefit, not, not for them, but for us. And, you know, their whole project is, I think, based on their lack of cash flow. But I've had no less than, I guess, three contractors in my office in the last two weeks who have said that they're really going to be hurt. As a matter of fact, one company is going to lay off some employees because they relied on small projects.
Well, we can get better bids and can't we?
Well, I'm thinking that, I wish Mann's bid came in a week later than they did because I think they would have been different. And I think that the bids coming in on these next set of projects, North Central, Southeast Tate, Alexander is going to be very, very competitive because they're out there hungry, looking for work. So.
So should we wait it and vote it down next week? Should we stay some time?
Well, you'd have to rebid.
Yeah, the bid is already.
I understand. It could have gone out for rebid. We've done that in the past.
There's, there's, well, for me, it's, I don't think it's ethical to do that. If you expose everybody's bids, I guess if you're going to change the scope dramatically, then you can do it. But if you keep the scope the same, in fairness, I don't know if that's the right thing to do. And you may, you may get a legal opinion that tells you, you know, I should change the scope, you shouldn't rebid it. I've dealt with that.
I think we're ready for our next meeting. Thank you all. Thanks.
Are we, are we going to be voting specifically on the newest proposal? Or are we going to be looking at the original accelerated versus the newly accelerated? Like what, what is the plan? If we're going to vote on something?
Exhibit eight.
The third one.
Exhibit eight, April 24th.
Exhibit eight.
Hey, sorry. I'm clearly needing to put my glasses on.
Unless you had some recommended changes to add up over to that.
I just wanted to be clear that all people are going to send us emails in the next hour.
We're going to vote on exhibit eight from the April 24th, 2018 work session.
I wanted to be clear while we're looking.
All right. I think that's good. Anything else on this topic? All right. Next up, attendance area development discussion. I'll start and then look for my colleagues to add. I think we've been, as a board, very committed to equity in our schools. We see it at the beginning of the meeting. We taught a lot about the need to ensure that all of our students in our community district have equitable learning environments and access and opportunities for them to be successful. We've talked a lot about ideas for how to close the achievement gap. We've talked a lot about climate and culture in the district. I think all of these things, and at least in my opinion, all sort of come together. I think we've recognized that in our elementary schools, especially, we see great disparities between student populations from one, one school to another. And I think there's a strong appetite in this board to address some of those inequities and to try to find ways working with our community to ensure that, you know, learning environments that are supportive and, and, and strong for all students in the district. So we've been spending some time at work sessions. We've been spending some time recently with Stephen and Kristen's help, putting together some content. And that PowerPoint that was actually posted very briefly on Board Dogs last night that we took down because we just did not feel that we were ready. It was a very early draft. We wanted to spend some time in this workshop, work session and also engage with community members to make sure that we really are clear on the vision, on the benefits, on the goals and the objectives of what we're trying to accomplish and why. And then do that good, hard work of talking with folks to understand what are the approaches that make most sense. And there's a lot of options. And so some of the things that we had put out in that very, that was in that rough, rough draft of a deck that we haven't finished yet are ideas around prepared schools, ideas around maybe some boundaries, some boundary discussions. Some ideas around other holistic sorts of supports that will be supported in these learning environments, like extending the advocate program to more elementaries. I think we've seen some success in Kirkland and that might be something I think that we should be considering expanding. We've talked about shared practices as a way of giving tools for working together to resolve conflict and resolve other kinds of matters. And that might be a support that we want to holistically put in place as we think about how to achieve greater equity in our schools. So I think there's a lot of, lot of levers, there's a lot of tools and a lot of approaches. And I think as a district and as a board, trying to engage community members again to understand what are the most important things that we can do that will have the positive outcomes that we're accomplishing. I think one last thing that I'll say is the commitment of this board is palpable. I think we've seen it in other working sessions and then we've seen it in other committee meetings and other times we've been together that this, this desire for equity, integration, support for diversity is really top of mind. We need to score and we want to do it in a way that's inclusive of community members and making sure that we're working together as we go through this. We had talked about originally having some community engagement sessions this spring. I think, I don't think we're ready for that. I feel that I think what we'd like to do is have these more one-on-one type conversations with community members, understanding points of view, understanding, you know, problems we're, that we're trying to solve, refining our message, refining the ideas for how to address equity in our district. And then using those conversations to refine and hone, not just our goals and objectives, but the ideas of options that we want to pursue. And then we'll come back together in the fall timeframe. So I think for me personally, doing this well, doing this thoughtfully, doing this methodically with strong community involvement is paramount. I do feel a supreme responsibility that if we are not thoughtful and methodical, we could make some mistakes along the way that sometimes it's hard to come back from. And so taking our time, getting that input feels very, very important to me. And I think that's what we're going to do is to step back a little bit, get that input so that we can move forward together. But I think the commitment is there. This is not a slowdown. This is maybe to get more information so that later we can accelerate. That's kind of an idea. So I probably talked too much. One, one last thing. I think we're still on a path for getting that input, creating some ideas, getting that community engagement and come forward in the fall with some proposals that we can react to and respond to with the goal of having whatever we agree to as, as a first step in front of us. And remember timeframe so that from an implementation change management communication perspective, we can implement whatever we choose to in a, in a methodical, proper way that would create communication along the way. So.
I just, I'm hoping that you can just clarify. You mentioned that there'll be some one-on-one conversations with community members. Can you clarify, who are those?
Well, that's, that's, we need to, we need to design.
I don't even know if we have a common goal or plan. So I'm hopeful that we can have a conversation on when will we work on what we're hoping to move forward as a board to achieve a lot of those goals that we have all kicked around ideas on. But I don't know if there's been a consensus on, okay, we're going to address looking at parent schools, things like that. I mean, it's a, briefly I saw, that was the first time and I saw it and it was posted by somebody else.
That's right. We have not had a chance to, we have not had a chance to look at that. That is a very, very early draft, trying to pull some material together to start just putting some ideas out there that we can react to, respond to, work together on. So we can talk about it now around shared goals. We can schedule a board retreat if we want to, to do that kind of approach.
Yeah, I would really like to see the doc, I mean, because we, that document, I think, had some good ideas, but again, it's gone.
Yeah, well.
So we, again, we as a board have needed to have that conversation.
My understanding was that maybe taking a step back and then engaging the community wasn't so much, let's talk about parent schools, but more of how do we execute our message in a better way? Personally, I don't speak well about race and diversity because I just haven't had to in my lifetime. So I don't do it well. But I know that we are valuing diversity in our schools and we don't have it. But I'm not the one that can help articulate that story. And I think that's where we need help, or at least that's where I need help. The rest of you are probably all fantastic. I'm terrible at it. And I would like to be better at it. And that's, that's the help I want to find from our community to help us really voice what we're trying to do. Because it's, it's this sort of amorphous thought in my head of I kind of know what we're doing and why we're doing it. It's hard for me to say it in a way that's really going to get that buy-in so we can actually have results. I think that's where I want to get to. And whether it's parent schools or whatnot, I responded to an email today. Somebody was asking about why you changed all the boundaries again. And I, what I said was, you know, we are valuing diversity. We're valuing integration in our schools, equitable learning environments in our schools. Some of those things can get fixed by boundaries, but not all of them. Some of those things may get fixed by doing parent schools, but not all of them. Some of those things can work in different areas of our, you know, geographical region just based on where schools are, but not all of them. Some of that can happen as early as the fall of 2019, but not all of them. And so that's not a great statement other than the fact that we're looking at a lot of stuff, right? Because what that says is we're being wishy-washy, right? In, in my head, after I wrote it, I'm like, oh, we're just going to do everything. It'll take however long it takes, right? And that's, that's the message we need to craft better. You know, what is that end game and then articulate those steps to get there because it's very fluid and fuzzy right now. And we are getting a lot of emails because boundaries is the word that's out there. And that's not the whole thing. It just, and maybe the earliest, but I want to make sure that that message is clear as people are coming with questions and ideas. There's some substance to it in our response.
Yeah, I was, Sean, kind of the same page, but how, you know, we need to have a goal or shared value to correct message around it and what it would look like. And I feel like you, that is, and I think what I'm trying to ask people to, who've ever sent email to figure if they, they are sending email, they're engaged in the process. And so after I explain, and I always just talk about kind of my, what I believe and, and the deal, I'm asking them to stay engaged. Like what are your ideas? Because we, we don't have, if we had the answer, we would do that. But if we don't have the answer, we're trying to, I mean, it's going to take really a lot of input from a lot of different folks. I'm also mindful of the fact that a lot of times, you know, we have a hard time engaging, well, you know, folks who, who are struggling economically don't always have the ability or the agency to come at, you know? And so I think a lot of times what I've seen happen in the past, like we open it up to the community, the exact same people struggle. And the exact same people get their way because they're that group. And I think we have to be mindful, maybe how do we engage folks who aren't normally engaged? How do we get out there and get people's voices who might be intimidated to go to a big meeting with 500 people where they might not have a popular opinion? And I, and I'm, that's what's, I'm thinking of when I'm like, okay, are we getting a diverse group of voices? Input into our deliberations when we talk about these. And that's, I mean, I was, I was involved in nine, 10. And that was not, you know, I mean, that's kind of what happens. You sort of have the people who always show up at meetings and who have very specific things that they want kind of end up taking that and engaging it. And I, that's where, that's what I've seen in the past is boards, you know, and I don't think any fault of them. But you're going to listen to people who are talking to you because that's who's talking to you. And you can't listen to somebody who's not, whose input isn't there. And, you know, a lot of what we're talking about, I think, when we talked about EPHRAL L numbers and people talk about their, the school that they're attached to. A lot of folks are super mobile and they may not be, have any, I mean, my, my older kids went to a lot of different schools. You know, because we moved 14 times in 12 years, right? And so that was just mobility. And so we didn't really care, you know, at the time, and I still feel this, we thought every school was great. So, okay, this year it's 20, the next year it's Weber. And we were fine with that at the time. But we didn't really have like the house that involved in the neighborhood. And so those folks probably aren't going to say, well, this is my favorite school. Because they may have, their kids may, just from their economic circumstances, attend three or four different elementary schools just because they're moving around town. And so, you know, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to take all of that and say, we've got, here's the problem. We know what it is. Here's the goal. And we have a real pretty clear goal, right, in our board is to get our schools within about 15% of points of one another, right? You got to start somewhere with a goal. And I guess, and then people say, well, why are you upsetting the apple cart? Well, we just decided those boundaries in. And all I can say is I don't know why the board didn't stick to that goal. It was their goal and they decided. It was their goal and they decided other things took precedence. Usually what I have witnessed is it's the idea of neighborhood schools. Now, the people say, equity sounds great, but it's really about geography. And the problem that in our community is we are a very economically segregated community. We just have pockets of wealth that, you know, you can't penetrate if you don't make X number of dollars. And then that's where our schools have been built. That's where folks are. And then there's not a lot we can do, do with that. We're not going to fix affordable housing, right? We're not going to put, you know, you're not going to put affordable housing in some of these neighborhoods. Like, that's not really going to happen. And so that's what we dealt with is, is that. So that's, so I think I'm, and I haven't, and people haven't responded to that. Like, when I say, stay engaged, what do you think about this? I haven't heard back from folks. Well, here's an idea. Because that's kind of what I want to talk to us, an idea is what's out there.
So as I view this, I, I feel like there's two elements of this process that we're talking about. There's the community engagement process of trying to get a groundswell of supporters that can help this be successful. So it's not just seven board members imposing this on the community, but instead we have a whole groundswell. And, you know, we can do things like talk to different stakeholder groups. We can go to the harvest market. We can do a number of different things to try and build that groundswell over time. So that by the fall, hopefully, we would have a nice sized group of people that could help us take this goal forward. That it's not just about, you can't go to your neighbor at school, but it's about the discussions about integration, the discussions about diversity. Improving education is what we're discussing. And keeping the focus on that is really what we would like to do from what I've understood. And I think it's hard, as Sean said, for us alone to articulate that and have it be successful with actual changes and bringing the community along as opposed to a lot of people just yelling at us and not liking the outcome. There will be some of that. The other piece of it though is that, as we all know, Steve, more than anyone else, this takes time. And that's the other element is that we cannot wait. We can't wait until we have that groundswell. Can't wait till fall to start figuring out what the it is going to be. So we are going, I feel like we're going to have to start working on that process even though we don't have that groundswell to control the conversation, not control it, facilitate the conversation. And so that I, I'm looking to the board to help us figure out, help us figure out collectively how we can get going on that process and, and start making some steps towards having solutions that people can understand. Now, we're not going to say these are the final solutions and we certainly want the community to, as we go out and talk to them, to tell us what they're interested in. But I'm looking at the issue of boundaries alone and through this multiple times. And it can't be accomplished in three months' time. It takes more time than that. A lot of meetings, a lot of revisions, and Steve knows that better than any of us. So, so I'm, I'm interested in the board's thoughts on when and how we can move ahead with that process while working on getting community buy-in. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that in our packet here, there's a vision statement that I found in an article from New York City Public Schools that I felt was very concise and directive as far as what they are trying to accomplish there. And I, I would hope that we could develop something that might be similar to this so that we have a very clear vision that we can talk about when we are ready to go out with the final product and take it out for discussion.
That's what I would just repeat back just from listening to you guys. And you kind of said three things there. You said there's two issues, but I heard you say three. And that's what I think I've heard the group say is the three about what's the vision? What's on the table to get there? And what's the community engagement component look like? I think those are the big three things. As you guys have shared now, that I hear that, you know, somebody got to figure out what's that going to look like? Any of those pieces?
What's the problem?
The problem is that certain good schools are not the best education opportunity for our kids.
And it's just that.
So, so I think that we define that. And I think, I'll be honest, my lens, and this is where I'm trying to evolve my thinking. My lens has been, the problem is that we have some schools that seem to be struggling more. Now, I think the problem is really our schools that are doing just fine. Like, those schools are preparing our kids for the world that they live in. And that's the unfair place. I think the lens typically is, oh, we've got certain sort of problems. I, I think I'm flipping that. The problem is, schools are everything seems like it's just fine because the truth is, then once you get to junior high school where you're like, wow, this is not the world I grew up in. And by then, I'm telling you, this is what I saw west. And I was there. And I guess it's the same. At high school level, our kids are pretty segregated, you know? And they're probably choosing to do that because they don't have a lot of diverse experiences, right? And so that, and it's, it's a little too late at that level to say, so now I'm going to learn how to live with people who live in a different income bracket. Really, it's largely income, I think. And that's what we're focused on socioeconomic, right? So if you grew up in a certain socioeconomic status, you really know how to hang out with somebody, be friends with somebody who doesn't have that experience. Do you understand what those cultural things are? And I think, and, and I, and it's hard, I think, for people who live in a neighborhood that's really nice and you walk to your school, crime is very low, to think that's a problem. But the truth is, it's a very, it's just not real. It's a very gated sort of, the real world's out there. Our world is here. And then, and I have heard things like, well, I earned this, right? Like, I make this much money, so I earned this neighborhood. And that means I get this type of school. And to me, that just runs contrary to what I believe public education is, which is the grade equalizer. Like, that's what we do is we provide equal opportunities. And I think it goes right back to Brown versus Board of Education. Segregation hurts kids. At its fundamental level, separation is harmful and damaging. And Brown versus Board is all about how it damaged kids of color. And how's it damaged kids' privilege, you know? And that's real damage. That the truth, that, you know, you set kids up for this sort of fairy tale world that's, that they're going to run into in junior high and be like, wow, this is really, and they're not ready. And then they don't, and there's all kinds of issues. I think we've seen that a lot this year. A whole lot of folks just having a tough time adjusting to, you know, cultural differences. You know, it's, see, it looks like the data that a lot of this comes from Harvard or differences in income. So that's, so I think helping the community see like, wow, this is going to make us stronger. And, and you can't just do it at the high school level and say, well, no, kids will figure it out when they get in high school. Because they, they aren't necessarily just going to figure it out. I think it's just like we're doing with our restorative practices. It's that big triangle at the bottom to say, what are the experiences all of our kids have to prepare them? You know, and elementary school is kind of our big thing at the bottom that, you know, our kids kind of funnel up. They're learning a lot of things in elementary school, you know, that, besides what we're teaching in the classroom, right? I mean, we've all been in school. We're probably learning way more on the playground. We're probably learning way more in the lunchtime. We're probably learning way more in those hallway interactions than the math and reading and science. And those are the opportunities we can't replicate without having kids have experience, right? I can't be in a very homogenous school and really teach a diversity. Because that's, we're going to talk about Martin Luther King. It's a slideshow, but it's not, it's not a lived experience. And I think that's kind of some of what we're getting at. And I, you know, want to be one of those districts of like, we do it differently. Because these are our goals. These are our values. And that, and that's what I ran on. That's what I said every single time I had a chance in, in both campaigns that I was in. And so that's my fundamental.
How do we, how do we want to move forward then? I mean, so I, it's actually the reason why I asked Steve to take that back down. We're not seeing it yet. And I was mortified that, that you guys have not had it because it was still left. So that could be a very easy next step is just to share what has been put together.
And I, yeah, I, I think that would be a great next step, doing that. And I don't know if it's necessarily a work session or retreat, but something that we can have that in-depth conversation and hit some of the points that, because now hearing people more, it sounds as though we're, we're all wanting the same goals. But we're saying it a little bit differently. But having that deck in front of us, I think will help us get that sort of into a concrete, this is what we're shooting for. This is what we're hoping to achieve. And now what's our next step on moving forward? And making sure that we give that support from the community and that we're better prepared to go out and talk about topics that doesn't come easy for us and just move forward and try and address the needs that we know are there in our community. Because I think JP said some things that, yeah, I, I agree with. As a community, we're not doing a service to the majority of our kids. Those of privilege and those that struggle a little bit more.
So next work session, we'll get the deck out in advance. We'll have a chance to look at it, bring your thoughts and ideas. It could be, it could be a more informed conversation. And, and the goal would then be to, at the, at least at the board table, us to have a shared understanding of what our vision is and what we're trying to accomplish, what the benefits are that we're seeking. And then next steps from that. Does that seem clear?
The, the statement is from New York or whatever, like, I think, much like the statement that we voted on today for LGBTQ, I think a vision statement of some sort is not a bad place to start, right? So yes, we have a slide, but I think if we get that concrete vision of what the end game is, everything else is the steps to get there. That's a good place to start.
I think one thing to consider is that statement, although it's not the same. I mean, our actually statement covers some of that.
I know this sounds like crazy talk too, but we have four goals setting coming up in June, timeframe, right? We get ready for the next school year. And I'd love to have had some more of these conversations so that when we go with the seven goals for the next, next school year, and same for the district team as well. I mean, what are some concrete goals we're going to put out there and measure ourselves against for the next school year? And, and I hate having goals that we're not marching towards, like the one that we have superintendent directive, 5J or whatever it is. I mean, we're not moving the needle on that. In fact, in some cases, we're going backwards. So I'd love for us to think about that too. But what's a goal that we can put forward for the, for the board, for the district to really sink our teeth into and start marching towards it?
Steve and Amy, what is the timeframe when you would like us to get into the meat of what we're going to do? Not just the vision and, you know, the discussion, but what, what timeframe do you need us to start that?
So what do you look at as the meat of what we're going to do? Because, you know, we've kind of put that timeline up. We need to be moving on it by December. So is, is what you're calling the meat of it, that community engagement piece?
I'm talking about what changes are we going to make? Are we?
So what would it look like in implementation?
Yes. So if, you know, maybe it's boundaries in some places, maybe it's parent schools in some places, maybe it's magnet schools. And, and like Sean said, those things aren't all going to happen at the same time. But when do we need to start? Like, for boundaries, let's just start with that. What would be the right timing on that?
As soon as possible. You know, realistically, I'm presuming you're going to want to take this out for some level of community dialogue at the fall. And you, those of you that have been through the boundary part the last time around, it's an iterative process and I presume that there'll probably be some work on that, whether it's boundaries for pairing or for busing or for whatever it is. And we struggle to get a second iteration out in less than two weeks. It's just a challenge to do that, to get them done, get them posted so that people can review them. So if you're thinking about what people are going to see the first time, how many times you're going to want them to see that before we get to December, fall's an incredibly short period of time. Now, I mean, realistically, you got about eight weeks there. Mid-September through mid-October through mid-November. So we got about eight weeks. So if we're not ready to come out of the chute at that first meeting in September, I think we'll struggle to have something that's ready to vote on in December. So if there's something that you want us to work on, we need to know what that is as soon as possible.
The one thing I'm curious about too is just kind of have that, having that December timeline looming. Does it make sense to force ourselves into that kind of timeline if we're, if we truly are indeed thinking about that it could be a combination of things? So boundaries, magnet schools, parent schools. Do we need to have that true bigger picture figured out before we start to check some things off so that we're not continuing to move the angles?
Yeah, in my head, I'm weighing that part versus having real tangible results, right? And I think that's been my personal dilemma is like wanting it to just like have something that we can hold on to, that we have a real win versus throwing something out there and seeing if it sticks, right? Doing it the right way. And I think we do need to define, I think, what the whole plan is because we can, we need to look everywhere. What different pieces may work. And we have to figure out what those building blocks are. If it's this couple neighborhoods here will work really well for shifting boundaries. But over here would work really well, pair a couple of schools. And over here, maybe this becomes a magnet. Whatever those things are, I don't think you can just say, well, let's, let's try this one thing here and see what happens and figure out the rest of it. I think we kind of have to at least have to have an idea of what we're going to put in different places and.
So maybe, you know, I think, you know, we're starting a sort of creative process and we want to, and we have one extreme, which is current status quo that the Lord has said is unacceptable, that we have schools this disparate. We already have a board goal of getting within 50%. So what's the crazy idea look like when all of our buildings are within 50%? And then what's that map look like? And that will probably not be truly possible, right? Without some super extreme busing or some, and certain neighborhoods aren't. And from that, you know, we might see that there's some pretty simple boundary switches, you know? Some neighborhoods that you can just switch from one school to the next and you go from 75% free reduced to 50, just with a neighborhood. That's a really efficient way, right? Because there's going to be some areas that there's no way you could do that unless, you know, you're, so what's just possible within the boundary of the law, which is busing, right? What are the limitations there? And then from there, we'll know, well, we'll have this thing that's probably unworkable. So then how do we tweak that to bring it in into something that is workable and, and hopefully some people get excited about and see some real potentials and opportunities? I mean, you know, speaking of hills, you know, the only way to move the needle on there is some kind of a magnet, right? Well, hills could be a great place, like an ag, elementary ag and stuff. There's just some ideas. And some people might say, I will drive from Corralville because I like that. Or my honest magnet that I think people would really drop to is year round. Because it's a real different opportunity. The educational experience isn't that much different. But for working families, you know, I might decide to drive down to Alexander because that year round schedule really fits. So, but I think unless we start with what the crazy map looks like, that where all of our schools are sort of within that 15%, we don't really know. Then we are going to be kind of picking on different places. So that to me is what, what's that? And then from there, what are the things? Because, you know, I, the more I think about parent schools, that's big logistic, I mean, that's a logistical touch from an educational standpoint. And I just don't know what a. And I just don't know what a, what a three-six building looks like. Like, I don't think we have that experience. So aside from just demographics, that brings in more, and magnets obviously, too, bring in an educational component that's trickier. But if we can see what the community would look like with balanced schools, that might give us... Because I don't think we're going to get a lot of engagement until somebody sees the map. And probably they're upset. And then they say, well, why did you move this neighbor here? And those people are thinking about their kids and that experience they have. Of course they are, we all do. But we're thinking about all of the kids and moving out. When all of the kids right now who are in kindergarten will be graduating. And we have only a group of 14,000 to 20,000 kids a day that we're conserving. And we're making those changes for that long term. So I think keeping, you know, people are always going to be and should be super emotional about their kids' educational experience. And I love that we have that engagement. And we're also thinking about kids that aren't even born yet. And what's their experience going to be like? And so I think if we see that map, that gives us somewhere to start. And then we can kind of narrow that discussion down as we see what makes sense. And here, and then here, people's feeling. Because that's the truth, is people are going to have feedback, and we'll be like, oh, right. We didn't think of that.
So to save Steve some time on the crazy map...
I've got one about that one.
We do have maps that he provided to us, I don't remember if it was 2016 or when it was, that tell us, within a two-mile radius of every school, who goes, who lives within that radius and what school do they go to? So let's just take, let's just take...
We can do that, we can do that for you relatively easily.
So let's take Longwall example, for example. I was looking at these maps this week, and I don't have the numbers up top of my head, but, you know, there's, we'll just say 100 kids. 100 kids from Twain that are within two miles. There's maybe, you know, 50 kids from Wood that are within two miles. There's maybe 100 kids from Hoover that are within two miles. So there's some places where we can just simply review those maps and then give Steve something to work with there. But then there's some places, like Alexander, for example, where there is not a lot of diversity in income within two miles of Alexander. Same for Schimick Elementary, there's not a lot of diversity of income within two miles of Schimick. So maybe there are some places there, where, or not necessarily there, but we pick some places where we say, okay, Steve, you don't need to draw us a crazy map for these areas because we know it's, we, just general fund-wise, we can't afford to do a lot of busing outside of that. I mean, anybody that's outside the two mile, we would be forced to bus. So if we know we need to be somewhat budget neutral, then there's going to be some things that are just off the table for certain schools. And so maybe it's identifying, identifying what are those schools that are just kind of off the table? And then we can maybe tweak some things for those schools, but we know we're not going to bring things into a, I mean, it's, I'm not saying it's impossible, but like, for example, with Alexander, to get them way down, we would have to take kids and bus them more than two miles. Now, that being said, we do have attendance for busing going into Alexander right now, and that attendance for busing could go somewhere else. So it's just a matter of changing where the bus goes. That's another option we could look at. But what I'm getting at is, is maybe we see those two-mile maps. And it's not even so much maps, it's the number of kids and what they would do down there.
Right, it's the demographics that go along with it, right.
That would be really helpful, just give some idea of, okay, then we can start targeting areas and...
And there have been some pretty significant changes since we drew those. So I, and Guide K-12 has more powerful tools on it now than the last time around. So that's, I think, something that, within a relatively short period of time, Adam and I can get that drawn up.
And what we'll find, that I found in looking at this, is our elementary schools in some places are really rather close to each other. And so there's going to be a lot of overlap. So that 100 kids from Hoover are within two miles of a lot of schools. And, you know, so maybe it's a decision of, maybe half of them go here for balance, and half of them go there for balance. I don't know what the answer is. But we'll have to make some decisions about where those kids that live within two miles are going to go if that's the approach we're going to take for those schools. Maybe we'll decide there's a different approach we want for those schools instead, because they're close together and pairing will be easy. You know, again, maybe that's, that's the better solution there. I think that you guys need a little bit of guidance before you spend a lot of time on saying, give us a map that has every school within 15% FRL of every other school. You're going to spend a lot of time on that. That would be a task.
Especially with us at this point, thinking ethically, so we can see what the picture looks like. And so that means, you know, where do we have to go? That would be...
We'll have to use 105 because I'll need the projector.
So Junish?
To get those maps? Oh, I think we can get you those two-mile maps sooner than Junish.
Maybe for the next work session?
Mm-hmm.
June 22nd?
Yep, we can do that.
Could you also do, look at it in 105 readings?
Yep.
And that's, I think, exactly what you provided to us in 2016, was two pages. First was the one mile and then the two mile.
Right. I'll probably do some comparison charts for you so that you can see it side by side, so you're not flipping through 20 sheets to try to figure that out, too.
So that being said, we're going to make a decision tonight, but are there, is that probably what we'll start? With seeing those maps, is there something else we want to...
I think we talked about, I mean, seeing the maps is fine, but we also talked about the work that had already detrived in having those two pieces of information would be a great starting point.
Well, and maybe we could get that, you mean the slide deck?
Yeah, the slide deck.
And maybe we could just get that.
And if they want, yes.
Because then, yeah, when I get home...
That's what I'm saying, that's what would lead our next discussion, those two pieces. Not, we have to wait until the meeting agenda.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And we were thinking that it would be great to take that slide deck. I mean, first, we need board input, but then, in a short order, start taking it to the Equity Committee, take it to Center for Worker Justice, take it to Black Voices, take it to, I don't know, you name it. Take it to a small group that lives in this neighborhood. I don't know. I think we often identify places where we could take that discussion on our, in our own circles. Does that make sense?
Okay, I think we've got next steps.
So does this happen at a work session? I think it's a work session. Maybe you can cover all this?
We want to limit our topics during the work session. Just a suggestion.
What if you say these two?
Might want to limit our topics in the work session?
It would just be these two topics, yeah. Get it clear on the vision and the message, and then also get the first round of...
I like that.
Keep having half-hour board meetings. It's a waste of time.
This format, I think those second board meetings are one thing.
That's the idea. Give you lots of time to process and think and work together collectively.
All right. Is there anything else on this topic tonight? I thought you were laughing a little. Sean's being on the way again. So...
She's putting me in my place.
Do you guys have emotions to return?
Oh, I might just ask for one more thing. Would it be possible for you also to provide us with the places where we're already busing kids? For, it could be, either we're busing them because of the boundary that they have, or we're busing them for attendance support. What I'm getting at is what's budget neutral?
Your board is already spending on busing.
I think we can get that. I'm not sure if it's in Guide K-12. I might have to see if I can get some maps from VersaTrans for that. But let me see what I can do.
Okay, are you going to make your...
Oui.
All in favor?